Public comments and so brace yourself, it will be a long meeting, but it is one of my favorite times of the year where we decide priorities for next year and our budget and all of that good stuff. And so best practices, we just listen as school committee members. And then for our next meeting, um, we will share out responses or or try our best to answer those questions. And so I will give each uh community member four minutes to speak. And so again, feel free to shut off your camera, uh whatever is easiest for you, we will begin shortly. Alrighty team, I'm giving our cable team thumbs up, let's get this meeting started. We have a quorum and it is six thirty-two, so as soon as we're live on Facebook, we will begin this meeting. Alrighty team, so we are officially live, good evening and happy Thursday, everyone. I hope you find yourselves safe, thank you for joining us tonight. We are hosting our public hearings, so thank you again for joining us. I am calling this meeting to order at six thirty-three P M. And let's begin with a roll call with Onika for, I'm sorry, pledge of allegiance and then we'll do a roll call for attendance. So please join me in unmuting yourselves and placing your right hand on your chest and uh we can begin with our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. So which is one nation under God. And the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Awesome, thank you. Friendly reminder to go ahead and mute yourselves. Sorry, Dr. Bata, I think we, we were uh, we beat you, we kind of rushed into that. Uh but thank you for putting the the flag up for us. Um and so while we put the agenda back up, thank you, Dr. Beta, uh Veronica, may we have a roll call for attendance.
Ms. Cabral. Mrs. Alfaro.
Present.
Ms. Kovas Karabayo.
Present.
Mr. Oregan.
Yeah.
Ms. Hernandez. Ms. Abbott.
Present.
Ms. Garcia.
Yeah.
Mr. Jimenez.
Present.
Ms. Velez.
Present.
That's seven members present and two absent.
Awesome. Alrighty team, the next item on the agenda is the school choice for the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three school year. Before we run into a vote, I'll turn it over to Dr. Albeta and Ms. Velez, who always help us by providing an explanation before casting a vote. And so I'll turn it over to them uh before we do a roll call for this um action item.
Okay, well, I'll start and then I'll let um Ms. Velez share um how how it works. So what school choice is, is that this would if we if we're I'm at, we're making the recommendation that we forego school choice. So that way all of our seats will belong to Chelsea students. So this is just saying we're not accepting students from other surrounding districts. Um and instead, we are uh, we are only accepting students in Chelsea public schools that live in Chelsea or Chelsea public schools. And so um I'll let Ms. Velez explain how the vote works because it's kind of, it's a, it's a little confusing.
The vote will go, if we, if you vote yes, then you are supporting um Dr. Albeta's recommendation that we will only allow Chelsea students that reside in Chelsea into our schools. If you vote no, that means that you're not taking the recommendation of Dr. Beta and that you are in agreement of letting students from surrounding cities come into our schools. Does anybody have any questions on that? Because I don't, every year, and I've been doing this for eleven years, there's always some confusion when it comes to the vote.
Thank you, Ms. Velez and Dr. Beta, and I'd also like to share that we are actually, thank you, Veronica, for for correcting me. We're not taking a vote on this, we will be voting on this on the March twenty-fourth meeting. And so this is just a quick explanation of what it is and then we'll vote on it on the twenty-fourth. And so if there aren't any further questions, we can move right along to open up our public comment section of today's meeting. Awesome. Great, alrighty, so now I believe we'll turn it over to Monica, uh who will present our information for tonight's meeting.
Are we, do we need to move out of order? Just because I saw that um, I think the agenda headed backwards. Just want to make sure we're in order. I saw public comment and then budget.
Got it, um, yes, Veronica.
I mean, so we offer a public comment for both topics. So the public comment was underneath the school choice and then the presentation, then public comment again.
Okay.
That's how the agenda read.
Perfect, sorry, I misread that. Go ahead.
Alrighty, turning it over back to to Ms. Lembry.
Apologies, people, everybody's over my buttons. Um, Dr. Beta's gonna start our presentation for the evening.
And Monica, you're gonna um, you can turn it for me, okay. So, well, good evening and um tonight, we're just excited to present our budget for school year twenty-three. And as our um Chair Garcia explained, tonight's the night of we present the budget and then we we listen to um comments. And then on March twenty-fourth, um, the budget will be loaded on. So um I'm excited to present. Um, last year, when we presented this budget, we had another R in here and it was reopen, restore and rebuild. But because we have reopened and we reopened successfully, um, we are now in the phase of restoring and rebuilding. And so we're excited to present our uh proposed budget plan to you right now. So our topics for tonight are funding for public education in Massachusetts, um Chelsea public schools revenue and expenditures, and then a revenue forecast and then expenditure forecast. And then we'll have our proposed budget plan and the next steps. Our vision is um Chelsea Public Schools is a gateway school system that welcomes and educates all students and families. And our theory of action, which is taken straight from our strategic, five-year strategic plan, is if we improve the quality of teaching and learning at every school and provide innovative and enriching programming for all, recruit, support and retain diverse teachers and leaders, engage families as our partners in our core work, ensure efficient and effective operational systems, then we will deliver the high-quality education to all students that our Chelsea students deserve. And we will improve outcomes and access across the system for all students. And every student will graduate from high school on a path to college and career success. So our strategic plan has some core shared values, um relationships, equity, instruction, safety, support and respect and integrity. So those are our shared values, um they're foundational for us as a school system. And our strategic plan um has five key priority areas. And these were derived from the listening and learning tours um that I conducted during my entry for an entire year and even um taking data from small focus groups, meeting one-on-one with people, listening to community conversations. So these were the other priority areas that really popped during this time. So um number one is rigorous and culturally relevant instruction for all students. Um, two was to increase access to engaging and enriching opportunities for all students. And then number three was recruit, support and retain diverse and high-quality teachers and leaders. And then number four was ensure efficient and effective operational systems. And then priority five is engage parents and community organizations and share decision-making to improve teaching and learning. So a lot of what we have done and is is tied back to our strategy. And so our strategy really does guide us as we make decisions um in our budget process. So our budget development process was, is extensive community input during Student Opportunity Act Plan, starting from the fall twenty nineteen to winter twenty twenty. Then we had our S R three listening where we did more listening in October of twenty twenty-one. Um, we also have our uh strategic plan that is a five-years to strategic plan. And then we call and informate, we meet with all our schools and our departments and review requests from each school, each central office department. And then this is how, with all of this information, how our budget is created. So um the next part of our presentation is public education funding in Massachusetts. I will turn this over to uh Ms. Lamboy.
Thank you, Dr. Beta. So funding for public education in Massachusetts is a unique formula and process. The first thing the state does every year is they consider what does it cost to educate all children who live in Chelsea, regardless of where they might go to school. They look at the student profiles, English language learning, special education needs, and they determine the foundation budget, which is the total cost to educate our children. Then they look at local revenues, property taxes, hotels taxes, meals taxes, and they consider how much can the local community contribute? Because different communities in different parts of the state might have different resources. Um, and then they determine that the total amount minus what the locals should contribute will become the state contribution. And the term for that is chapter seventy after the state law. So we talk about our chapter seventy funding is our state funding. Um, that number is still for all children in Chelsea. So from that number, we deduct the funds that go to our charter schools and our vocational schools. Um, and but we also get some funding from the state specifically for charter school reimbursement. Um, at the end of the day, that provides us with the budget, which is one number. There's a separate number, it's very important, is it's not just enough to budget for student needs. We actually have to spend a minimum of required net school spending. If we budget but don't spend the money for student education, there's actually a process by which um that will be identified by the state and there's penalties that would be incurred, um and we have to get back up to the net school spending. Um, this is just a graphic representation of what I just said. If this circle is the foundational budget to to instruct and teach all Chelsea children, um, this portion is the state's chapter seventy contribution and we have our local share. Um, then from that comes our charter school tuition, which is um the wedge is literally taken out of the the pie here. Um, focusing more on our local share, there are subcomponents to what the city of Chelsea offers us. The first is what's required by the state to meet that number that the state has established. On top of that, there are some spending that is not counting towards net school spending, but that the city of Chelsea sees as a priority. This includes our transportation, our yellow bus transportation, our, it also includes the intergenerational literacy program, among other things. Um, and then above that is a voluntary local contribution that the city of Chelsea provides us with um because there's support, education for our kids. Um, looking at the year that we're currently in, we're in fiscal year twenty-two. Um, just to show um everyone, where do we get our money? Um, the largest share shown in red is our chapter seventy state funding, but the city of Chelsea contribution is very substantial at twenty-point-seven percent. Um, to that, we add our grants and our grant percentage has gone up um largely due to the COVID one-time monies. Um, a couple of years ago was around ten percent, now we're nearly at fourteen percent grant funding. And revolving funds, the single largest is our lunch fund, which is a revolving fund. Um, and you can see the total allocation for the current school year of one hundred and thirty-one million. Um, it's eleven-point-six million increase from last year. Um, how do we spend it? Um, I will say every presentation that we are a people business. Our products are heavily people-driven, our teachers, our cafeteria workers, our custodians, our paraprofessionals. So um labor and health insurance um is the largest categories. Um, then to that, we have um special education expenses that are not labor, um predominantly out of district tuition, but also consulting services, technical support, that's not from staff, uh transportation in district, out of district and door-to-door, maintaining our buildings, paying for our utilities, information technology, supplies and books, and um other small, including professional development contract services. Um, this is just a graphic representation of that same table where you can see our our people, our labor and insurances are about seventy-three percent of our budget and the other categories are visible there. This is only our general fund numbers, but the ratio's about the same. Um, every budget year, we talk about enrollment. Um, enrollment's critically important because our funding is on a per pupil basis. So even though we are in a growth period through the Student Opportunity Act, where each year right now, our per pupil allocation is going up. If we have a downturn in our enrollment, that could actually erode some of those gains that we are hoping to get through the new Student Opportunity Act. Um, this graphic shows enrollment from two thousand and five to date. Um, between two thousand and five and two thousand and ten, enrollment was relatively stable around fifty-five-hundred. Um, then there was a tremendous uh increase um up to twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, where um we peaked around six thousand three hundred students. The pandemic year, which was twenty twenty, when we were on remote learning, was a down year, which was common across the United States as parents did not send the smallest children to school predominantly. And um right now, we're at six thousand and seventy-four students um in district. Looking forward, we want to kind of consider what next year might look like. We do a three-year trend and you can see in the yellow column um a breakdown of what we're projecting by grade band. So early learning center, the Mary C. Burke complex, our middle schools, our high school grades, um and then our out-of-district students. Couple of things to point out about enrollment. We're anticipating the largest high school enrollment um since prior to two thousand and three, um over one thousand five hundred students at the high school grades. Um, we are seeing modest declines in grades one to four and reductions at the middle school level, um a lot due to charter schools. Um, and we're doing lots of outreach to our families to tell them how great our middle schools are. And um we've had a very, very large cohort of students moving through the our schools. They're now in the eighth grade and moving on to the ninth grade, followed by slightly larger-than-average seventh grade moving up into eighth. Now, taking all that information, looking forward, um what do we expect for next school year? So this table here um shows the total funding for all Chelsea children. So our chapter seventy allocation for fiscal twenty-three, one hundred and four million, six oh nine, and the city contribution, twenty million, four eighty-four. You can see the difference from the year prior, um it isn't clear increase. Um, from these numbers, we add our charter school revenue and our charter school tuition. Uh, you can see for the year coming up, we will have just over four million dollars of charter school revenue. It is an increase from last year, but the charter school tuition is going up by a greater amount. So the difference between the charter school revenue and the charter school tuition is fourteen million, four sixty-three, which will be deducted from the total funding for all Chelsea kids. To that, we add the city funding that is either not eligible for net school spending or the above the minimum. And um we are looking at a budget for next school year of just under one hundred and nineteen million. It is a very, very substantial increase of nine million, seven hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars beyond where we are today. Overall, the city is spending over twenty-nine million dollars on education, including the vocational schools. Um, we wanted to mention our big grant funds, which are S R two and S R three. Um, they're not what the school committee is voting on, but they are so substantial, we wanted to call attention to it. Um, these are one-time monies that will be available through September thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. That's the end of the S R three grant. Um, our applications have been approved by D E S I and the school committee. And among the uses that were included, we added sixty-eight positions on the S R two that will transfer to S R three, um including the creation of the Chelsea Virtual Learning Academy, um COVID-related expenses, temporary nursing, cleaning, P P E, uh reading and math curriculum and investment of a million dollars forthcoming. Um, after-school and summer school programming, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars we will have over the next few years, mental health services for students, and we're going to make significant investments in our school buildings to, on the air handling system, the H V A C systems. Um, priorities for the upcoming year, Dr. Beta, I'll turn it back over to you.
Hey. So our priorities for um school year, for this coming school year, twenty twenty-three, as I stated earlier, are really to focus on restoring and rebuilding. And so when we're talking about restoring, I'm talking about restoring so much of what we have lost over the years. And and that's where our Student Opportunity Act funding comes into place too. So as a result of having the Student Opportunity Act funding, we're able to really restore and focus on rebuilding. Um, so in in school year twenty, last year, twenty twenty-two, we at, we were able to add forty-nine general fund positions and that was with our chapter seventy. And then we added sixty-eight S R two and three positions. So that was all on S R two and three and that's stimulus funds. And so um the focus of those, adding those positions was really to restore. And we, what we did is we strengthened and we expanded for equity with special education. We added to English language and English language learner support. We added social emotional supports, curriculum development supports. And then we worked on the acceleration of literacy and math. We worked to reduce um teacher-to-student ratio in classrooms. And then we really have focused on teacher recruitment and retention. And so our proposed budget plan for a school year twenty twenty-three, I will turn that back over to Ms. Lamboy.
Every year, to do what we do today costs more, whether it's the inflationary costs or cost of, cost of living increases, steps. So this table shows um basically what it would cost to do what we are doing today um for next year. Um, as a result of the um closure of the bargaining agreements with all of our unions, um, we've made major strides in pay in Chelsea. Um, about four million dollars will be dedicated to um cost of living increases and steps for our employees. Um, insurance and retirement is typically a very high um item, a growth item, but this year it is not. Um, what we're observing is that some of our younger staff are not taking um health insurance from Chelsea schools. Um, so we've been able to to basically keep that level. We are anticipating an increase in special ed tuition of a million dollars. The school committee will remember, we prepaid one-point-two million dollars of tuition for the current year from last year's monies. We do expect that is going to be used up or almost all used up and tuition costs will be increasing. Um, our transportation is expected to go up. We are in a year where we're going to be entering into new contracts for our transportations and it happens to be a time period where inflation's high, gasoline prices are going up. Um, so we are expecting a increase in the cost of transportation. Um, and added to that are, there are two existing positions that are going to come off of grant funds and move on to the general fund because those grants do not have capacity any longer for those positions. So that is um five million, five hundred and sixty thousand dollars just for the baseline operation of the of the schools. Um, but we still have substantial monies to do some exciting things. Um, going to move through each of our schools, um at our early learning center, the key initiatives for the year coming up, accelerated literacy and math and strengthening special education. We are proposing to add a teacher, a special ed inclusion that will help the students that are in the general ed classrooms and six paraprofessionals focused on special education in our sub-separate classrooms to provide needed support to our teachers um to meet the needs of the children in those rooms. Um, just to let everybody know, continuing on our S R two and three grants, the way that we structured it, will be an educational team leader, social worker, reading specialist, two English language learning teachers and two paraprofessionals. Moving up to our elementary schools, our Berkowitz Elementary. Key um initiatives for this year, social and emotional support. It's very much a theme um throughout everything that the schools are doing, English language learning and accelerated literacy and math. At Berkowitz, we're proposing to add a half a counselor, if I could explain that. We're proposing to add two counselors across the four elementary schools that will be a half a counselor for each school, um a teacher for E L L and a math specialist because that school would really like to focus on its math literacy. Continuing on S R is a reading specialist and two paraprofessionals. I will point out that we were able to, with S R grants, to provide a paraprofessional in every first-grade classroom, which is something Chelsea has not been able to do previously. At our Hooks Elementary, key initiatives are again, social emotional support, L and accelerated literacy and math. You'll see the half counselor again and in the Hooks, um they want, like to add a reading specialist, which will bring us to a total of four, so we'll have one per grade. Continue on S R, this will see another reading specialist and several paraprofessionals for different focus areas. At our Kelly Elementary School, which is our Caminos program, we are growing our bi-literacy program, grade by grade, social emotional support, E L L, Caminos and accelerated literacy and math. Here, we're proposing to add their portion of the counselor and three teachers for E L L. As a dual-language school, they have different requirements in terms of E L L services for their students and this is going to maintain our compliance with those requirements. Um, continuing on S R's, reading specialist, a teacher and two paraprofessionals. At our Sokoloski Elementary School, same key priorities for all of our elementaries. You'll see the half counselor and a reading specialist. Continuing on S R, another reading specialist and our first-grade paraprofessionals. Moving up to our middle grades, um Dr. Beta has really focused our attention on our middle grades to um strengthen our programs and make them really great, great programs. Um, English language learning, accelerated literacy and math. At the Brown, we are proposing to add a world language teacher. That's a teacher that's teaching Spanish language, um not the dual-language program. Um, two E L L teachers to help students learn English and a reading specialist. Those will be um joining the S R positions of a counselor and coaches for history and science and paraprofessionals for English language learning. At the Clark Avenue Middle School, um same key middle school priorities, um proposing to add an L teacher and a reading specialist. They will be joining the counselor that was added last year, um a social worker increase, the coaches and paraprofessionals. At the Wright Academy, same themes, there we will be adding a special ed inclusion teacher, a math specialist to really drive the math um at that school and a paraprofessional to support. at that school, and a paraprofessional to support our library. It's only staffed by one teacher, one librarian at a moment. Continuing on S R two and three is a counselor, a half a social worker, and the coaches. That half social worker is shared with the Brown, which is one person for the building. Moving on to Chelsea High School, key initiatives, E L L, special education, and accelerating general education across the school. We are not proposing any new general fund positions this year. The reason being that fifteen teacher positions were added in twenty-two, the year that we're in, twelve of them being general fund and actually four from the S R. So in the S R grant, we added a social worker, a coach for digital literacy, three subject area teachers, and paraprofessionals for special education. At our Chelsea Opportunity Academy, which is our alternative high school, we continue to look for space that will facilitate enrollment expansion, as well as room for Chelsea High School in the building that they're in currently. No new general fund positions are proposed for Chelsea Opportunity Academy, and we have grant funds for some of the cost for the build-out of a new site. Our Chelsea Virtual Learning Academy is our brand-new school this year. It is fully funded by the S R grant. The and they offer exclusively online opportunity for students in grades three through twelve. We are moving forward with increasing our enrollment at the school. We think it offers a unique opportunity for our Chelsea kids. No general fund positions are requested because, again, the school is funded by S R, including the principal, teachers, social worker, and counselor. Instruction and assessment, which is really drives our curriculum. We're accelerating at all grade levels literacy and math and really moving forward with the culturally responsive curriculum. We are proposing to create a director of culturally responsive curriculum, who will work with all of our grades and all of our schools to make the curriculum particularly relevant to our kids. We're proposing a coordinator for college and career readiness. This has been a key priority for Chelsea. But now we have an opportunity to really create somebody who's full-time focusing on the college and career readiness. And a coach for English language learning at the elementary levels. We already have one grant-funded position. This will bring us to two, and each school will have a half coach. And continuing the S R funding for reading and math curriculum. In our area of special education, we will be proposing a transition specialist. This individual will work with our upper-grade students who are about to translate, transition out of Chelsea High School to either additional schooling or to jobs. We currently have a contractor that does that. We think bringing it in-house is going to be really important and helpful to our kids. A vision specialist, which is for assisting students who are vision impaired with either brailing or being able to benefit from the curriculum. This is also outside, and we're bringing it in-house. Proposing to add two social workers for special education, who will meet the requirements for students' individual education plans. The two positions transferring from the grant are in special ed. And two support positions, one administrative assistant and one clerk. Continuing on S R is assistant director for special education district-wide, three speech-language pathologists, and eight interpreter translators that we created from the grant to provide live interpretation for families in the I E P meetings and also interpretation of translation of written documents. In our health area, we've made a significant investment through COVID. We're not proposing any additional grant, any additional general funds. We have from the grant a COVID manager, additional nurse aides, temp nursing services in health. Other general is our after-school and summer programming for Twilight School and Orchestra. Other district-wide investments, our teacher pathway, which has been tremendously successful in bringing new teachers to our schools, growing our pairs into teachers, convincing our teacher, our parents to join the the schools to be paraprofessionals. We currently have forty-one staff participating in this program. To date, it's been predominantly grant-funded. Those grants are coming to an end. We think the investment is meaningful, and we're proposing to move it on to the general fund, as well as increased costs for building maintenance, rent for our new annex building at Webster Avenue, and revision to the student handbooks with a lens of equity and inclusion. Continuing on S R is the district-wide training on equity inclusion. Just to look at this encapsulated by grade, you'll see the investment at the elementary and the early learning center, our middle grades, our high school, and district-wide. The district-wide positions are six for special education, two for instruction, and one custodial position in facilities and transportation. Another way to look at the same numbers is by type of position. So you can see the investment in our instructional positions, which are directly working with students, our student supports, which are also directly working with students, paraprofessionals, administrative, and other where other are two support positions and a building maintenance. Overall, we hope that you will find that this presentation, these proposals met all the priority areas that Dr. Abita mentioned at the beginning. And we are happy to hear any questions and comments that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lamboy. School committee members, any questions for Ms. Lamboy? Questions or comments? Roberto or Mr. Jimenez?
Yeah, just have a really quick question. I I missed the number. How many educators did you say we had on the educator pathway, the teacher pathway program? I thought you said forty-one. Just wanted to make sure I have it down right.
Forty-one are participating either in the teacher or the paraprofessional.
That's amazing.
Or actually administrator as well.
Yeah, great, great. No, just want to, again, applaud the work of Team Lambos. I know it's one of our, you know, biggest priorities is diversifying and increasing our workforce. So, yeah, just amazing.
Awesome. Mr. Jimenez, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Cabral?
Thank you, everyone. So I love the emphasis on multilingualism and the additions that we're seeing to the Caminos program. That was a program that I was part of as a student. One question I do have regarding the elementary schools, I'm wondering, what explains the modest declines that we're seeing in the elementary school recently?
Sure, I can answer that question for you. The declines in elementary, what we're seeing mostly is at fourth grade. We're going for transition fourth into fifth grade, so that's students leave our our elementary schools and go to middle school at between fourth and fifth grade. So a lot of families, as you know, they do end up attending charter schools or going to independent schools. And so we do lose enrollment at that age, at that grade level. We are working on with our closely right now with our elementary, our fourth graders and our fifth grade family and like rising fifth graders right now to do transitioning with our middle grades and really working to let parents know about our middle schools and how wonderful they are. And so we're we're inviting families to our schools, our parent liaisons are working, and our principals are working really hard to reach out to families and let them see our schools. And so that's really part of the, something that we're really focusing on right now. Monica, you and Sunboy, do you have anything to add to that?
I think there's also large, absolutely everything Dr. Batet just said, but we also are living in a region where housing costs are continuing to rise. So we are, you know, sort of monitoring those. It's it's beyond our capacity, but we are monitoring families that might need to move because of financial pressures.
Thank you, and I do have one last question. So despite the fact that many positions were added in the past year at Chelsea High, what plans do we have to support this incoming student body of ninth graders that oh that are experiencing, they're larger in comparison to the other grades?
Yeah, so we have, we have a bubble at at Chelsea High School right now, and so that bubble, there's extra F T E there right now, so then they will move down. Obviously, when you create a master schedule, you're you're able to apply them and shift, you know, sections to say the ninth grade, because we do have that bubble moving up. And so we, the master scheduling process actually started in January this year. Mr. Lovato has been working with the high school team to really make sure the master schedule is meeting the needs of individual students and is also working to make sure that students do not have any gaps in their schedules, that they're getting what they need to graduate and to be on track. Mr. Lovato, if you wanted, could you comment a little bit more on that?
Absolutely, Dr. Beta. So, yeah, I confirm with what Dr. Beta shared. We we have started to look at not only our incoming freshmen, but also rightsizing on any of the sophomore, junior, seniors. And again, looking at what it takes to also start shifting our master schedule on thinking about progression for entrance of the university versus just trying to graduate a kid, right? Just trying to graduate a kid is great, but we also want to make sure they're prepared at the higher level as well too. But we do anticipate having kids with their schedules with the information they need before they leave the high school, so that's why we started so early as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cabral, for your questions. Any other questions or comments? Uh, Ms. Goulas?
Um, I'm actually just going to go ahead and say that I took a tour recently at the Early Learning Center myself. The principal was kind enough to give me a little bit of her time, which I so much appreciated. And I have to commend the faculty and the staff and everyone that is taking the time to make the children's experience and education possible. And I mean, again, my children will be going into the the school system in September. And I am, I I would have never guessed that this is what they were going to be. It it's amazing, you know, it 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 puts my heart at ease. I I cannot believe what the school system, it it's it's night and day. It's borderline revolutionary. The the work that has has, it's definitely money well spent. Ms. Lamboy, the presentation on the budget was incredible. I love everything that's, it's just so, it's such a proud moment to see what, how far the educational system has gone and where we're going. And of course, there's so much that we could still do, but, you know, building the children from the from the such a young age upwards is, you know, that's that's what we need to do. So more than anything, I just want to say that any parent that can take the tours of the schools and, you know, if we can take the time, even as ourselves, in whichever school area or district that we need to just potentially look into. I'm sure that we can go ahead and request the the time or, you know, to take a walk through and see what needs to be done and and get a little bit more insight. But, I mean, I have nothing but great things to say in in my personal opinion. So if it was just as a parent, I mean, definitely, if I had ten kids, ten kids could go there. A thousand percent, so very comfortably saying. So very proud, I can't, I mean, they're going to be great. So just want to throw that out there, so.
Thank you so much for your kind words.
Ms. Garcia, may I have a word?
Absolutely. Go ahead, Ms. Afaro.
Thank you, Ms. Laboy. I echo, you know, what everybody has said, an excellent job, putting together all of this budget and managing the finances of of the school. That is our responsibility, and with a lot of things going up, like you did mention some of the economic aspect, the student mobility, that's kind of like my comment. If it's a way possible that we can track down when the student mobility is happening, if this student is transferred, per se, from Chelsea to East Boston, is there a way that we can at least track the city where they're moving at? So that we can do some comparison of like the rent increase that you mentioned, that I know Chelsea's rent is like, it's crazy how prices are going up, but the neighbor neighboring cities as well. So just a curiosity, we can do that, if there is a way that we can track that down.
I can, we have, we track every monthly. I I ask my staff to give us a report of incoming and outgoing, but and and we do report it out at every school committee, just like the numbers, so you'll see the mobility rate. One thing we have done and is looked at, where are where are our families going? And when they leave, many of our families are going further away, going to Lynn. A lot of our families go to Lynn, and a lot of our families go further, further north because rent is is getting so expensive. We can definitely do that, but we have done that in the past. And that's why, part of the reason why we belong to the Five District Partnership is because we know that we share students with Everett, we share students with Malden, and we share students with Revere. And so we, as superintendents and as as school systems, the Five District Partnership, we come together on a weekly basis, on a monthly basis, and we talk about how best to align our assessments, our performance, we're looking at performance-based assessments right now as a Five District Partnership. And so just really trying to take a look at how we can better align instruction for our students, because we recognize that our communities, we share our families and we share students.
Thank you, Ms. Afaro and Dr. Beta, for your explanation. Alrighty, team, it looks like we are ready to move on to public comment. But before that, I'd love to commend our, one, I'd love to echo what our school committee members have already said. I've been on the board now for, I think, seven years now, and it never, this team is phenomenal. And we continue to work together as a team to serve our students. And this is why we do what we do. It's for our students. And so thank you to each and every one of you here that I'm looking at on the screen and at home watching. So thank you again for all that you do. And now we have the chance to hear from you all, so I'm excited to open up our public comment section. As a reminder, you'll have four minutes to speak, and school committee members, once again, we are listening, we're being active listeners. And then we won't vote on, we will not participate in any voting tonight. That will happen on March twenty-fourth. And so Veronica, we are ready for public comment. Is Renee our first public comment?
I know Renee's our translator, actually, I'm adding a, I admitted our, we have a few youth from the Green Roots Eco group here, so I'm letting them in now.
Awesome.
So Darian, if you can hear me, you can go first. I'm, I think your counterpart is trying to get in.
Awesome. Darian, welcome. Please state your full name, your address, and you have four minutes to speak. I will be keeping a timer and providing updates via chat for time. Thank you.
Always thank you. So my name is Darian Rodriguez. I live on sixty-six Parker Street, Chelsea, Massachusetts, and I am a freshman in Chelsea High School. I'm here to advocate for the CPS budget to prioritize higher teachers salary. The first quarter of my freshman year, I had a Spanish class. The first few weeks, there was no teacher to teach us. This ended up being emptier and emptier each day as more and more students disconnected from this class and lost effort or didn't care. After a whole quarter of no teacher, we finally got a teacher who could trust and effort and focus in this class, but came more noticeable. I had formed a bond with the teacher, and as a class, we grew together. And so a few weeks after she had to quit over not being paid enough, we yet again had another sub. The next quarter, we were promised everyone would have a teacher, but as soon as the first day of new classes started, we had sub after sub. This is an example of promises not being kept. This is an example of promises not being kept by the school because not enough teachers is a big issue. And I think, and I think um, it should be prioritized because not only is education going down, but effort and care for students is as well. Having that bond with the teacher you trust is very important for students' education to do better. This situation hits closer to home because my mom had to leave her job because the school failed to negotiate a deserved pay. She had to put herself and her financial security first and move jobs. This didn't only affect her, but also her students and families she worked with, who had a hard time transitioning without her. Based on the information I provided, I ask that you give teachers the higher pay they need to have stability for themselves. Thank you to the committee chair and school committee members for the opportunity to be heard.
Thank you so much, Darian. Alrighty, I welcome our next public comment speaker to unmute themselves and join us. Please state your name, your address, and you have four minutes to speak.
Um, hello, my name is Grundle Oliva. I live in thirty-eight Eden Street in Chelsea. Um, and yeah, so as a student at CHS, um, I'm sorry. So I'm sixteen years old and as a student at CHS, I would like to speak about my experience as a student. Um, so as a student, a friend, and a son, I hear many things about what's going on in my school, and I think it's about time we make a change. My school says it does not require any help or new staff members, and that is all a lie. Uh, my friend is a prime example on why we do need this urgent help. Um, so in, at CHS, every Tuesdays, we have an advisory class. And in this class, they let us know upcoming news, upcoming events, and stuff we need to know. So if we're gonna choose classes and stuff like that, we can choose them. And he told me that his teacher just quit mid-year and he didn't have an advisory class to go to. And personally, I have a few experiences myself where I see that teachers aren't motivated enough and they don't just, they don't teach with that same passion that they used to teach over the course of like the few years I've been in school. They used to teach with passion and now I just don't see that anymore. And we just don't have enough staff members to fill in the spots that we need. Um, so I see that some teachers need more motivation or pay. And then we also need more staff members because we are running low. I've asked a bunch of teachers as well. And they tell me that there's a staff shortage and that they really need some. And we are not just A through F grades and nor percentages. We are the future of this country and we need this help. We need more staff and more pay for the teachers so we can get the education we deserve. And I thank you guys for your time. I appreciate it.
Thanks so much. Alrighty, for the next public speaker, please welcome, uh, please state your full name, address, and you have four minutes to speak. For the next public speaker, please welcome, uh, please state your full name, address, and you have four minutes to speak. For the next public speaker, please welcome, uh, please state your full name, address, and you have four minutes to speak. For the next public speaker, please welcome, uh, please state your full name, address, and- No, you're muted.
Okay, sorry. Um, I didn't realize it was me and I've now gotten very flustered. Okay, um, I'm sorry. My name is Arison Engel and I'm the art teacher at Brown Middle School. I've been a middle school teacher for the Chelsea Public Schools for fifteen years. Um, I live at ninety-one Whittier Road in Reading, though. Um, for the first time in fifteen years, I'm speaking before you to advocate for a budgetary commitment to restorative justice in our schools and specifically for restorative justice directors or coaches. I wanna go off script and say it's poignant that I'm going after those two uh, wonderful high school students that just spoke. I think it provides good context. Restorative justice in education is the practice of creating a community and leveraging that sense of community to create equitable and safe education. It drives SEL, instruction, whole school culture, family engagement, and most importantly, equity. It's important to understand that restorative justice is not a means of behavior or class management. It's the practice of developing a community that supports one another. We all know that all of our children need community more than ever. Based on studies done by Zaretta Hammond, the author of Culturally Responsive Teachings and the Brain, many of our families are from collectivist cultures. Collectivist culture is focusing and emphasizing group success, collective wisdom, and the belief that group members take care of each other to get ahead. The district's strategic plan states the value of culturally responsive instruction to close the opportunity and achievement gaps. But it's not just instruction. It's the whole school environment that needs to be culturally responsive. And at the Brown Middle School, we've only begun the process of implementing restorative justice. We've created a restorative justice leadership team, provided circle training for most of our staff, and begun training in diverse and equitable awareness and teaching. We began this process in the twenty-twenty-one school year with professional development with Suffolk University. Based on the Suffolk University RJ Center, a whole school RJ model, sorry, restorative justice model, includes a director within the first three to five years. This director position provides, coordinates, professional development, student circles, family circles, staff circles, data collection, practice adjustments, among so many other responsibilities. This is a full-time job and not that of a social worker, guidance counselor, or principal. The district has already invested in restorative justice by funding leadership program for at least three participants that I know of, myself included. In this program, I've learned that many of our surrounding schools already have restorative justice directors. Chelsea isn't behind, but it is our time to create this position for our students. I don't have to tell you that the past two years have been rough. And we've had a lot of students that are thriving and are more motivated than ever, but I'm not gonna lie. A lot of students are struggling to find their purpose and their true safe community. When I say we need culture, a culture based on restorative justice, it's true. We need safe spaces, group success, and collective wisdom. Our students need to feel seen, heard, and understood. We need intentional restorative justice in our schools, in our schools. And this is why I'm asking you to fund restorative justice director positions. I wanna say thank you to the committee chair and school committee members for the opportunity to be heard and for being so committed to all of our children.
Thank you. Hi, welcome. Uh, please state your full name, your address, and you have four minutes to speak.
Hi, everyone. Um, my name is Lauren Jorgensen. I live at five-five-seven Salem Street in Malden. I am currently one of the school counselors at Wright Middle School. Um, and before I get started with what I was going to say, I wanna say how great it is to see that there is emphasis in the budget for elementary school counselors getting those positions and for a director of, uh, or coordinator for college and career readiness. I think that's incredible and I think it really goes along well with what I was going to say about school counselors. Um, so this year, we've had more counselors at the middle school level than we have before, which is incredible. Um, I wanted to give some context as to kind of how that's going in a very difficult year. Um, so thus far this year, me personally, I've had over four hundred meetings with students. I've been able to run three different groups. I've done four different classroom lessons with gra- the grades that I support, um, which is not as many as I would have liked, but it's more than I used to do, given the additional support, which is amazing. Um, what's great about this position, and it's a very much a misunderstood position, is that unlike other professionals, school counselors are professionals that work within all three domains for students. That's their academic domain, their socio-emotional domain, and college and career domains. Um, we're really seeing the highest need that we ever have in all three domains for reasons that we can all see. Um, we're tasked with working for every single student, and that's whether it's on an individual basis, in small groups, classroom lessons, or school-wide programming. Um, to give context for how much need we've had this year, during our mental health screener this year with the social workers, out of the students that took our screener, we had eighty-one students flagged just in our school for need of individual follow-up regarding their socio-emotional needs. Um, we really wanna make sure that we're moving our program from that responsive crisis management to more of a preventative lens and a proactive lens. And our middle school team has worked really hard to actually build a curriculum that we haven't had before. Um, it's still quite overwhelming with just how many students are really at our tier-three status. So the students that need the most um, help with coping skills, academics, and for future planning. Um, most of our, our time right now is spent with those tier-three students just because of the level of need in Chelsea. But really, according to the American School Counselor Association, most of our time should actually be spent with tier-one and tier-two students, which are those in the general population and those that need slightly more intensive intervention. In my personal experience, even though it's my fourth year count, working as a counselor, I've never had so much need and so many different balancing priorities that I have to balance students asking me for check-ins in the hallways, teachers calling my office, a long list of to-dos. Sometimes it seems virtually impossible to get my list of student check-ins below twelve. That just seems to be in my number. Um, so I just wanna emphasize that I'm so grateful that we've been able to have another counselor this year and just the need for middle school counselors in order to really prepare our kids for high school. Um, thank you so much. Thank you to the school committee for hearing me out today.
Thank you. Hi, welcome. Please state your full name and your address, and you have four minutes to speak.
Hello, my name is Megan Mary Hilda. I am, um, I live at four-seventy Center Street in Randolph, Massachusetts. I'm a seventh and eighth grade English language learner teacher at Brown Middle School. Um, I'm here today to advocate for the CPS budget. One, to appreciate your addition of two English language learner on positions at the Brown Middle School. Um, but also to advocate for a full-time social worker position for, for our English language learners at BMS and WSCA. Um, one reason that I'm advocating this is because we have the money. Um, CPS will receive nine point five million dollars in SOA money alone, and we still have millions of unspent money in Esser. We know that um, the population of our students needs and deserves more support, especially as we recover from the past two years of COVID. Um, especially our foundational students who are navigating a new country, a new education system, and living environment. We're seeing class sizes, particularly for our most vulnerable students, like foundations, to increase again, and these students deserve more support. All right, Abel really wants to participate. Uh, I have worked at BMS for six years, and every year, each grade level of the foundational program receives as many as fifteen new students as, as the year progresses. This number does not include newcomers who join the Chelsea community over the summer. And every year, the social work programming has changed due to staffing or funding. Um, our students deserve to have someone they have a relationship with to be there available daily to support their emotional needs, especially. Um, especially um, with the increase in needs and severity of needs throughout the COVID pandemic. I talked to a social worker at our school and she said she's met with over one hundred students um, this year. And that's just not fair for our students. Um, in addition, the foundational students transition out of the program to other classrooms. Currently, when a student moves from foundational program to the mainstream setting, they have to switch their social worker. I think that's unfair for our students and families. Lastly, other middle schools in our district have um, two full-time social worker positions. I think all through middle school should have the same number of positions to support equity. Um, I thank you for the time, um, and for my four-year-old, I apologize. Have a wonderful evening.
Bye, baby. Thanks so much for, for coming in.
Shout out, shout out to parents for joining us with their kids. Uh, we appreciate it.
Absolutely.
And also, um, Ms. Garcia, can I just quickly just mention for folks, um, when you come onto the meeting, you, you need to make sure that you turn off where you were watching the meeting previously so that, because it's a little bit delayed, so people get confused. Just wanna make sure, just mute where you were watching the video prior.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Uh, Courtney, welcome. Please state your full name, your full address, and you have four minutes to speak.
Thank you. My name is Courtney Phoenix. I live at sixteen Curtis Road in Sagas, Massachusetts. I am an eighth grade science teacher and science lead at Brown Middle School in Chelsea. I am speaking tonight with the hope that the school committee will know a teacher's perspective on the budget process. I have been a teacher at Chelsea Public Schools for eight years. Unfortunately, this means that with the exception of last year, I have seen positions cut, resources dwindle, and class sizes increase. Last year, when we saw funding increase, Central Office held focus groups for various stakeholders, including staff, and teachers were able to give feedback. It was so encouraging to felt heard, and it made clear that the budget prioritized repairing what was broken from previous cuts. We gained a few of the positions we had lost, and we were promised that this would continue until we were made whole. It felt great to finally work in harmony together to give back to students. This year, when budget season came around, members were really excited to advocate for the resources their students still lack. However, many staff were never asked. Teachers did not have the opportunity to provide feedback or ask questions. When the budget proposals were presented, many staff members were surprised by what was proposed and weren't given context or explanation. At the Brown Middle School, a new world language teacher and reading specialist have been proposed, rather than the staff's desire for an additional halftime social worker or a restorative justice coach. We've seen students increased emotional needs this year, and these positions are critical to addressing the many non-academic needs students have so that they can come to the classroom ready to learn. When I spoke to the union executive board about this lack of opportunity, it became clear that this was a trend in the district. Some schools reached out to their building leadership teams, but as a district, I believe we can do better to make sure we have systems that prioritize staff and community input. We are the experts on our students' needs, but we were left out of the conversation. While there are valid reasons for the positions requested at each school, including staff, staffing, and class sizes, teachers and staff are feeling left, like their expertise is of no importance to these crucial decisions. I ask that the school committee urge the voices of every stakeholder to be heard. Teachers and staff know their students best. They know the needs of the school. There should be a process for school leaders to elicit feedback from staff and provide that to Central Office. It's time to ensure that staff voices are heard. Thank you for this opportunity. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. For the next speaker, welcome. Uh, please state your full name, your address, and you have four minutes to speak.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Joanna Plats and I live at fifteen Gibbon Street in Somerville. I'm an EL teacher at the Berkowitz School and the vice president of CTU. First of all, I want to thank Dr. Beta and her team for proposing a budget rooted in access and equity for all learners. As an EL teacher, I was especially happy to see additional EL teachers added at many schools, as well as a much-needed second EL coach at the elementary level. These additions will reduce our caseloads, better allowing us to give our EL students the support they deserve. I hope this trend continues, as even with this addition, my caseload will still be around seventy students who are each entitled to forty-five minutes of services per day. I was also thrilled to see the addition of counselors at the elementary level, especially as mental health needs rise around the district. I was both heartened and apprehensive about the addition of new elementary and middle school curriculum. I agree that having common language and strategies will strengthen our district's vertical alignment and continue to build our efficacy as a culturally responsive district. However, as the search for new curricula begins, I urge the district to involve teacher voice in the process. In my eight years in the district, our curriculum has been very inconsistent. When I first arrived in twenty-fourteen, I was given no curriculum at all. As a first-year teacher, I spent hours writing my own curricula on top of figuring out how to teach and manage a classroom. The following year, the elementary complex spent an entire school year vetting three different literacy curricula, eventually settling on journeys. However, journeys lasted only for a few years before we were asked to switch to teacher-created UBD units. We still use those, but every year, units are added and taken away, meaning we are constantly reinventing the wheel. Every time we begin to feel comfortable with a curriculum, we are asked, asked to teach something different, sometimes only days before school starts. Just last week, my grade-level team was introduced to a new writing unit- Just last week, my grade-level team was introduced to a new writing unit a week and a half after we were scheduled to start it on our pacing calendar. As teachers, we are experts in our subject matter and especially in our student body. However, it is hard to feel expert when we are constantly changing what and how we teach our subject matter, and with little to no say in the matter or time to prepare. Please let us use our expertise to guide the curriculum purchasing process through feedback surveys and curriculum committees that include teachers, families, and students where appropriate. Our goals of finding culturally responsive, standards-based curriculum are aligned. Teacher, family, and student voices will bring an invaluable perspective on what actually works for students. Chelsea students deserve the best we can give them, and the best lessons are taught when teachers and students are invested. Thank you.
Thank you.
Make sure to mute the other ones.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Welcome, Nicole. Please state your full name, your address, and you have four minutes to speak.
Hi, good evening. My name is Nicole Lemmy, and I live in Boston. I'm an ELL teacher at the Wright Middle School. I'm here to advocate for the CPS budget to prioritize adding one more L teacher to every school. As a fifth-grade ELL teacher in Chelsea, I have the largest caseload of students at my school, which is thirty-seven, an increase from last year's thirty-three. Almost half of my students are also duly identified, meaning they also have an IEP and are special education students. This year has shown how much of a need exists for more ELL and sped teachers at our schools. In my schooling grade level, we have only one of each, and we are both at our functional capacity trying to handle our caseloads. It would vastly benefit the students to have additional L teachers as the number of English language learners increases annually. Therefore, at least one more ELL teacher at each school would be a worthwhile investment to best serve the evident need in the Chelsea population. As an ELL teacher, I see daily the success our language learners have when they are given the assistance they deserve, as well as the great things they are capable of when this is paired with their personal drive and their parents' commitment. As class sizes and L enrollment increase, so does the need for increased levels of academic support. And with new funds comes new opportunities. Based on the evidence provided, I ask that you fund more L teacher positions at Chelsea schools. Thank you for the, to the committee chair and school committee members for this opportunity.
Thank you. Welcome, Vanessa. You have, please state your full name, your address, and you have four minutes to speak.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Vanessa Mendoza Mercado, three eighteen Chestnut Street, Chelsea. I'm here tonight to highlight items in the proposed budget for the next school year. As an ELL teacher at the Kelly School, I am excited to see an increase of EL staff across the district. As we heard tonight, there are many ELL teachers here advocating for the addition of ELL teachers across the district. I am excited to see three additional teachers being added at the Kelly School, and know we can always use more. I hope we continue to meet the needs of the students and families as we build our schools to be fully equipped with the necessary staff. I'm also excited to see the addition of additional counselors at the elementary school, knowing that we will have halftime counselors this year and hoping that we will see an expansion of full-time counselors in the following years. One suggestion I have about the budget is about the revisions to the school handbooks. Based on our conversations, the current goal is to hire outside consultants to lead this work. I would like to suggest we rethink this process and use the funds to provide stipends for community members, including students and families, to rewrite our student handbooks. As a district, we are moving towards a more equitable and restorative approach. And I believe the best way, I believe the best way to accomplish this is to uplift the voices in our community and provide paid opportunities to our students so they can lead the work. As we saw tonight, we have students who are already willing to take on these leadership roles, and I believe we can build the capacity by supporting students in paid opportunities to build and show us what it is that they need in our schools. With the addition of the culturally responsive curriculum director, I see this as a great opportunity to build our knowledge internally and build leaders in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Please state your full name, your address, and you have four minutes to speak.
Um, sorry, is it my turn?
Yes, yes, it is. Sorry.
Hi, my name is Isabel Meggs. I live on Water, on Oliver Road in Watertown. And I am the seventh and eighth grade ELL teacher at Wright Middle School. I'm here to advocate for the CPS budget to prioritize adding one more EL position to every middle school. We know our population of students needs and deserves, oh, sorry, we know our population of students needs and deserves more support as we recover from the ongoing COVID-nineteen pandemic. Co-teaching is the most effective way to help transitional EL students access content area curriculum and gain the requisite language and literacy skills they need to realize their potential. Splitting teachers between different grades and classrooms creates inequitable workloads for teachers and does not maximize student support. Our L students deserve teachers who can focus exclusively on them and their academic development. A true co-teaching model, in which instruction and curriculum is designed, designed with all students in mind, would require the addition of at least one more L teacher per school. We have the money. Allocating that money to new L positions would prove to our students and our community that we value all our students regardless of their linguistic backgrounds and believe in their abilities and futures. To truly support our students and to maximize the talents and the expertise of our teachers, I ask that you fund more L teacher positions in Chelsea Public Schools. Thank you to the committee chair and school committee members for the opportunity to be heard.
Thank you, Isabel. Hi, Catherine. You know the drill. Welcome. Please state your full name, your address, and you have four minutes to speak.
Beautiful. Sorry, I was just muting my Facebook. Hi, everyone. My name is Catherine Anderson. I live at fifteen Powderhouse Terrace in Somerville. I've been a special education teacher at the Browns since two thousand thirteen, and I'm the president of the Chelsea Teachers Union. I just want to start off by saying how pleased I am to see a budget so full of systemic support for English language learners, students with disabilities, and for social emotional needs. After years of cuts, it's just so exciting to finally move from mere restoration to the, some true additions to our school community. It's a great moment for Chelsea Public Schools. Besides the addition of personnel, this budget could also provide an opportunity to demonstrate commitment to one of our core values of including community voice. As we work to welcome and educate all, we've got the opportunity to upend systems at silence and instead work to include our families, our staff, and our students in the plans for a district that's finally starting to get the resources we've deserved for so long. I support the vast, vast majority of this budget. There are two line items, curriculum review and student handbook review, that I feel have an unfortunate reliance on consultants. We've taken the very important steps to hire a director of diversity, equity, inclusion, and then this budget includes funding for a culturally responsive curriculum director and maintains DEI training for our staff. I think we should use this local expertise to guide a process that can compensate staff, students, and community members for their advice on curriculum choices and equity-based changes to the student handbook. I don't want those budget items eliminated at all, but I want to see the money spent in our community. Our reliance on consultants to tell us what will be culturally relevant for our community could miss a critical opportunity to engage our students and families in our school system. When we don't take the time to purposefully and explicitly prioritize the voices of those who will be using and experiencing our curriculum policies, we can end up missing important pieces of information. Our budget on the whole prioritizes the positions we need, but it has a few holes that you've heard testimony about tonight. With formalized inclusion of community and staff input at each school, this could have been averted. I would hate to see similar holes in the curriculum or policies that we're selecting because we've devalued our own knowledge of our students and ourselves. Again, we are so excited to see a budget that prioritizes positions that our students deserve, and I'm really looking forward to working with the district to create the policies and to choose the curriculum that our students deserve as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hey, Michelle. Welcome. Please state your full name, your address, and you have four minutes to speak.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Michelle Block, and I live at sixty Norfolk Street in Dorchester. I'm a district-wide speech-language pathologist. "Miss Block, why you not take me yesterday?" a student will ask me in the hallway. And then another, "Miss Block, you never take me anymore." I glance at my calendar to see that I have yet another IEP meeting during their next session. I sigh. "Hopefully soon," I tell them. This is the reality for many students seeing SLPs and other related service providers, like occupational and physical therapists at the elementary complex. They don't know when they're going to see us next, and we're doing a disservice to the kids. So why do I miss so many sessions? Well, in addition to providing direct speech and language services to sixty students across four elementary schools, we also complete their evaluations, some bilingually, attend their IEP meetings and conferences, and write their progress notes. Adding all this together, the five SLPs at the complex have missed over sixty sessions that have yet to be made up in two thousand twenty-two alone. Think of related services like a pizza or cake, where each student gets a slice. The more students we serve and the more in a group, the smaller the slice for each student. Think, up to eleven of our students with the highest communication needs in a group. Especially coming out of this pandemic, our students deserve the biggest slice possible. Right now, what they're getting is more like crumbs. Sometimes, they're not even getting anything at all, and that's not filling or legal, according to special education laws. This is where you can be part of the solution. The more SLPs and other related service providers, the bigger the slice for each child. It has made a difference, adding the positions from last year. Just think what a difference we can make in these kids' lives with more access to communication support. Let's give these kids what they deserve. They deserve and need more SLPs. Thank you. I'll start, I'll translate some in Spanish for those who may be listening until I get cut off. Hola, mi nombre es Michelle.
Sorry, we, we do have a translator on the call.
Okay.
But you, you do have two minutes left, so feel free to use the time as you, as you wish.
I'll just start it, and then if I get cut off, it's fine. Hola, mi nombre es Michelle Block, y soy una terapeuta de habla del lenguaje para las escuelas de Chelsea. "Miss Block, por qué no me llevaste ayer?" Un estudiante me pregunta en el pasillo. Y luego otro, "Miss Block, ya no te veo." Miro mi calendario y veo que tengo aún otra reunión de IP durante su próxima sesión. Suspiro, pronto, espero, les digo. Esta es la realidad para muchos estudiantes que van a terapeutas de habla y otros especialistas en las primarias. No saben la próxima vez que nos van a ver, y es un perjuicio para los niños. Entonces, ¿por qué pierdo tantas sesiones? Pues no solo doy terapia directa de habla del lenguaje a sesenta niños en cuatro escuelas, sino también hago evaluaciones bilingües, asisto a sus reuniones de IP y conferencias, y escribo sus notas de progreso. Sumando todo, nosotros cinco terapeutas de habla en las primarias hemos perdido más de sesenta sesiones que aún no hemos recuperado, solo en dos thousand twenty-two. Pensamos en las terapias como una pizza o una tarta, que recibe una porción cada niño. Cuanto más estudiantes estamos sirviendo y más está en un grupo, más pequeña será la porción para cada niño. Consideran, hasta once de nuestros estudiantes con necesidades más graves de comunicación en un solo grupo. Aquí es donde ustedes pueden ser parte de la solución. Hemos notado la diferencia de los puestos adicionales del año pasado. Imagínense la diferencia que haríamos con más acceso y apoyo para la comunicación. Gracias.
Great job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Awesome. Welcome. Oh, they are connecting to our perfect. Hi. Welcome. Please state your full name, your address, and you have four minutes to speak.
Great. Good evening, honorable school committee members. Dr. Abada. My name's Adam Waldai. I'm the president of the Chelsea Administrators Association. I live at forty-five Havelock Street in Malden, but spend most of my time at one eighty Walnut Street in Chelsea as the proud assistant principal at Wright Academy, which you are all, of course, welcome at any time. We had the opportunity to show Mr. Jimenez around our building a few months ago, which was a lot of fun. I do also want to take a second to applaud and thank some of our Wright staff who you've heard from tonight. But primarily, I wanted to speak in support of the budget proposal presented by Dr. Abada and her team and thank them for the amount of involvement that we've actually had in the process, both as building leaders and that we were able to have with our staff while working, while we worked together to develop our budget requests. I really do believe that the proposals that we saw tonight reflect the themes of, and the commitment to supporting rigorous teaching and learning, expanding access, opportunity, equity, and family and community engagement. You know, as administrators, our job is to support the work that our amazing teachers and paraprofessionals are doing in the classrooms each and every day, and to be a resource for our students for both their academic and their social emotional success. In particular tonight, I just wanted to extend my support and gratitude for the consideration of the Director of Culturally Responsive Curriculum and the Coordinator of College and Career Readiness Positions. We know that there's no greater undertaking that we can embark on as a district than making sure what our kids are learning is relevant, responsive to the needs, I think, both of the world as a whole and their own lives. Chelsea is really showing, I think, what we value by investing in a position to work with our admin and our educators to prioritize this work. It'll benefit kids for years to come and hopefully continue to shift the mindset of our staff at large, too. Investing in a college and career readiness coordinator, I think, will pay off in how we help guide our students from the complex all the way through graduation, strengthening, I think, the work that's going on at CHS right now, both in the present and in helping kids plan for their future. We know how important adding classroom positions are, and this proposal, I think, does a great job at making that happen. I'm appreciative that I think we're also considering adding these two particular positions to support the staff to work with and for those educators, and that we center the needs of our students throughout the decision-making process. So that's it. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee, for both your consideration and your time.
Thanks, Adam.
Thank you.
Hi, welcome. Please state your full name, your address, and you have four minutes to speak. Hi, welcome. Please state your full name, your address, and you have four minutes to speak.
Hi, um, my name is Magrinda Bulich, and hi. My name is Magrinda Bulich, and I live at fifty-one Main Street in Malden. I'm currently teaching a grade five transitional ELL students at the Clark Avenue Middle School. I'm really grateful and hopeful with recent proposed changes in budget. I've been teaching in this district for over twenty years, twenty-four years now, and I've been serving ELL students in multiple grade levels for many school years and within many school years for years. At one point, my position was split between two schools for three years in a row, and needless to say, that was not quite effective. With the situation, with number of ELL teachers getting better, we are still in great need for more. We are aware that now we have an opportunity to invest in the stuff our students need, and we know that our population of students need and deserve more support as we recover from COVID pandemics. During the recent, for example, during the recent, recent access testing at Clark Avenue Middle School, due to lack of teacher staff, I alone proctored testing for ninety-two students, and each student had to take four tests that combined accounts for nine, three hundred sixty-eight testing sessions that kept me away from co-tod classes for three, four weeks, which placed a tremendous burden on teachers, content teacher being in the co-tod classrooms by themselves all that time, in oversized classes as well. So these are our needs at the moment, and I hope that the committee will seriously consider our needs and try to hire new staff. We are in great need for two ELL teacher per grade level, one for foundational ELL students and one for transitional ELL students. And given the multiple level of language proficiency in foundational classes who are pushing in mainstream cohorts, there is a great need for a content DLL teacher, especially for history and science classes at every grade level. In addition, I would like to take the opportunity to speak on behalf of some teachers, especially special education teachers, bilingual teachers, who are here on student visa and who are great assets to our staff. In order to stay, they need to get sponsorship through a J-one program by DESI called Bridge Visa. I'm urging our district and our unions to help them to stay. So with an available budget to enable the district to hire new staff and to retain existing staff, I hope our I hope our needs will be considered. Thank you so much for an opportunity to speak tonight.
Again. Hi, welcome. Please, full name, your address, and you have four minutes to speak.
Okay, did I successfully mute the Facebook? Okay, yes. So, yeah, just a moment. So, hi, my name is Russell Weiss Erwin. I live at ten Coffee Street in Dorchester, and I'm the seventh and eighth grade Camino's dual-language history teacher at the Brown Middle School. I'm new to Chelsea Public Schools this year, having worked in Boston Public Schools for the four previous years, and I'm here tonight to celebrate the increases in staffing that this budget reflects and advocate for more investment across the schools in additional supports for our multilingual learners and, and at my school at the Brown, for an additional social worker, an additional EL teacher, and an additional restorative justice specialist. So as, as folks have mentioned, and as, you know, we, we see every day, there's an enormous need among our kids at the Brown, and I'm sure at other schools as well, for stronger support for our multilingual learners. We have many amazing folks working with our yell's. I have coworkers, including Megan, who spoke earlier, whose level of commitment to our students is just amazing, who put in long hours and go above and beyond to consistently figure out, you know, what our kids need and how best to support them. As, I mean, everyone knows the, the, the core of good teaching is the relationship that we have with students. And, you know, we constantly have new students coming in in mid-year, which means that there's, there's work that needs to go into relationship building, you know, all the time and, and at an even higher level than I think when teaching other populations of kids. And in order to really serve those students well, we, as many people have spoken to this evening, we need more EL teachers. It's good that we're getting more, but we need more than, than this budget currently reflects. In addition, I want to reiterate what my colleague Garrison mentioned towards the beginning of the, I think actually she was the first educator to speak this evening. As we're coming, you know, as we're back in schools, in, in-person learning at this later stage of the pandemic, it has been hard for kids transitioning back into in-person learning, and there's all kinds of conflicts that come up when you haven't been in a building interacting with other people for a while, and, and getting the support that a restorative justice specialist and a social worker would represent at the Brown would be huge, and I think would go a long way to supporting students in their well-being and social emotional well-being and, and then, you know, thence to their, to their learning. So therefore, I just want to urge you to add one additional EL teacher at each school and a restorative justice specialist and an additional social worker at the Brown Middle School. Thank you so much to the committee chair and the school committee members for the opportunity to be heard. Thank you.
That was our last speaker, and I have four comments to be read.
Ed, would it help if I keep time for you?
Um, sure, I can probably read them pretty quickly.
Okay, great.
Our, our first comment is from Cayanara Oberto. I am a Chelsea resident and live on one oh four Franklin Avenue. I'm a senior at Chelsea High School, and I'm here today to advocate for more mental health support at CHS by incorporating the funding that was given to Chelsea Public Schools and to having more counselors and social workers available to students. Recently, I took part in a project for one of my classes, classes where my group and I researched mental health across the CHS community to see what things need improved. We thought the best way to get students' input was to ask them ourselves through an anonymous survey that we sent out. We surveyed over a hun, a thousand students, sixty-six percent of CHS students. The data was collected, showed that the majority of students are upset at the lack of availability to social workers and counselors. For example, I recently, recently I needed assistance with a change in schedule with one of my classes that was affecting my grade, and I wasn't able to get an appointment until two weeks after, due to my counselor having his availability booked up. This experience affects my education as well as others who have gone through similar experiences, which is why we're asking for more support for CHS students. Thank you. Next comment is from the Special Education Department for the district. The Chelsea Public Schools Special Education Department is proud of the one vision teacher, two physical therapists, four occupational therapists, four BCBAs, and the fourteen speech and language pathologists who provided related services to our students in need. This year, we were fortunate to have an increase of five speech and language pathologists and three BCBAs to support our students. While our caseloads remain higher than surrounding districts, with the addition of these staff, we have been able to decrease the caseload so that they are more manageable. We are continually monitoring workloads of our staff and making budget decisions based on our students' needs. While sometimes therapy sessions are canceled, our therapists are completing important tasks that are necessary for our students, such as attending IEP meetings, providing consultation to teachers and to other staff, and evaluating students who are struggling. They make every effort to make up sessions for our students. Thank you, Bridget Craig and Cindy Rosenberg. Next comment. Hello, school committee members, educators, parents, and community members. My name is Liliana Feliz, and I am a social and social worker at the Brown Middle School. I have worked in Chelsea as a middle school social worker for over seventeen years, and I'm here today to advocate for more social workers, counselors, and mental health assistance for our students. Our students have gone through so much in two, in the last two years. The pandemic that left them with anxiety, grief, depression, and fear. We have students who struggle with trauma and loss from leaving one country and traveling to another. Our school population is made up of very vulnerable students who need assistance. Currently, we have social workers and guidance counselors in our schools who are working relentlessly with our students and try to provide them with what they need. This is not enough. We need more. We need more social workers, guidance, and mental health providers in our schools. We have the task to teach our students to be high school slash college-ready, and yet we are lacking in providing them with the help they need to deal with their mental health issues. How can we expect our students to concentrate in academics when they have so much going on and we do not have enough staff to help them? We need more social workers, counselors, and mental health in all school, all schools. We have the funds now, so more, no more excuses, please. Let's show our students that we care not just about their education, but also their well-being. Thank you to the committee chair and the school committee members for the opportunity to be heard. The last comment says, good evening. My name is Chad Nieming, and I am a sixth grade ELL teacher at the Wright Middle School. I am writing to request funding for an additional ELL teacher to be hired at each school in Chelsea. Excuse me. I request this out of the concern that too much is being asked of English language learners who are struggling to succeed with additional support they require. Many of us recall our school years as a time when we were challenged, but we were, were able to succeed and graduate. The school curriculum is built to, to be rigorous, to engage students, and to help them grow to, into their potential. When you add this to, this to the difficulties inherent in studying course, course content in a language you are still learning, however, the academic challenge can be in some surmountable, especially to an eleven-year-old's mind with a limited number of successes to date and unlimited resources to call on. I ask that we provide students with the assistance they need to grow so they may successfully take on academic challenge that school provides and graduate with the knowledge that they have required in a great education. An additional ELL teacher for each school would also assist content teachers in the effective delivery of their lessons. It is incredibly difficult to successfully plan a differentiated lesson for a class with a third of the students are Ls at different English language levels, often duly identified. Our teachers are dedicated and want to succeed as much as they want our students to succeed. Please assist us in making this happen by providing our schools with the L, ELL assistance our community requires. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Awesome. Thank you, Ed Onika, for reading those comments. Team members, that wraps up our public comments section. To the audience and those watching at home, thank you for pushing us. Thank you for caring about our students. Thank you for constantly reminding us why we do what we do. And so with that, I'd like to close today's meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn to tonight's public hearing?
Motion to adjourn.
Sec, is there a sec? Awesome. Have a wonderful night, everyone, and see you on March twenty-fourth. Thank you.
Night.